Good afternoon, everyone. It is 4:30. It's actually 4:31. I'd like to start today. Welcome those of you that are here, as well as those listening in. I would again like to remind you that your comments and your opinions are welcome here. And as you desire to participate, I would ask that you remember these things. First of all, if your cellphone's not turned off and you're here, please check it and turn it off. You will have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public forum portion of our meeting. I know we do have one individual that is dialing in. That will be Preston. And if there are others, Todd, please let us know if somebody else has dialed in. But you will have that opportunity during the public comments. When addressing the council, we ask that you please wait to be recognized by myself and then step to the podium. Or in this case, if you're Zooming in on your Zoom meeting, we will address you through that. But state your name, your address for the record, and then speak to the council as a body, not to any single member. Questions will take and under advisement. There will not be a back and forth discussion at that time. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than four minutes, and after making your comments, please be seated. I ask that everyone, and I know that you will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, I'd like to begin. I ask you to join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Gerstler.
Here.
Greg Ginn.
Here.
Tom Ayers.
Wayne Marano.
Here. All right. Moving on then to item two, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support? Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Hi.
Bruce, Marano.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. We are now in the public forum portion of our meeting. Preston DeBoer is with us, I think, joining us by Zoom. Are you there, Preston?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. You are free to speak. And again, I ask you to limit your comments to four minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you are aware, you can have submitted a request for an extension. Essentially, this comes about as we're going through the COVID pandemic. We were looking at those groups that would have eligibility for an extension. We feel very strongly that at some point in the next several months during the normal bargaining season, we are going to probably see an additional spike. It has been predicted, and our researchers have justified that that is likely to happen as schools begin back and colleges and travel resumes back to normal. Essentially, each group has up to five years of a continuous contract eligible. Several of the groups that I have have met that five-year pattern, and they must bargain. They don't have an option. We then looked at those groups that had an option. Some of them have a year left, some of them have two years left. This is a group that has four years left of eligibility. And essentially, what we're looking at is with the potential of essentially exposures, we're looking at the time limits that are involved with the processes that need to take place. One of those processes is the recertification election, which doesn't take place until October. So we lose a month of time that would be used for negotiations. And then if you introduce, you know, the possibility of any kind of quarantine within that period, it's going to take out two-week blocks, which is going to push everybody's schedule, you know, to a limit that we're not going to be able to accomplish those things that we would need to accomplish through the normal traditional bargaining cycle. Essentially, what the proposal would be is that all items, articles, sections, and subsections would remain just as they are, stated in the current contract, and that we would entertain a proposal of essentially a wage increase that would match that, which we finished last year. If we were going to go into normal traditional negotiations, that would not be our opener. You know, we would come in at a higher number than that, and there would be several more items likely to appear in our initial proposal. This is a way to streamline the process, to wind up at the same end, at the same time, same time, same resources, save money. And like I said, and the biggest thing here is the risk and the restrictions that, you know, we could find ourselves under. You know, basically, what we're looking at is that it's a streamlined version. Basically, what we're asking for is a fair and equitable wage increase. Our position, as Sam and I have discussed, would be that, which we finished last year. We would entertain a re-opener for insurance if the net premium rate would exceed 10% for that year. So like I said, if it would get to be above 10%, then we would reopen on insurance as well. So those two things are attached imbeddically, and they're hard to separate out, and it wouldn't be fair to nail down one without having the option to deal with the other. So essentially, we feel that there's mutual benefit in this process. If not a new process, I have the same situation, City of Sioux City, the same situation in Armstrong, Iowa. We've completed our extension at that point. Sergeant Bluff, we've completed our extension at that point for one of their bargaining groups. I'm trying to think of the other. Estreville, there are two extensions in place. Those are two-year extensions.
Okay. Preston, you've got 30 seconds to wrap things up here. Sorry to interrupt you, but you've got 30 seconds here yet. You've got 30 seconds. I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay. I'll leave the rest of the time in case anybody has questions.
Okay. We're going to accept those comments now, and then once we get to that point on our point six of our agenda, I would ask that you could hang, if you could hang around, please just continue to Zoom in like you are in case we would have further questions at that time.
You can try to call me. I'm basically taking time out from a teleconference convention to be on this call.
Okay. I'm going to follow the protocol we have.
Sam knows my number. If he wants to give me a call, I'll do everything I can to answer that if possible.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sam.
Preston, we'll be there in just a little bit, but I don't really have an easy way to call you from up here.
Okay. Yeah, because I basically have to return to the balance of the convention. We have some votes coming up.
Okay.
If we have a question, we'll call.
Okay. Thank you, Preston.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. All right. Are there any other more public comments to be stated at this time? One else is zoomed in on the screen here, so you're going to be speaking to us later. All right. Very good. Then let's just move on then to the item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Bruce.
Hi.
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 Okay. And so now, yeah, we are at that item six. I'd like to open up the floor for discussion on that, based on what we've heard from Preston this afternoon, as well as what we have in our packets. To do this properly, I guess we need a, in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, we should really have a motion to consider this. If there are comments ahead of that, you know, this is kind of a last-minute discussion, so.
I guess if we're going to have a discussion, I would move that we address this.
Second.
Okay. I'll take that then. Roll call, please.
Bruce.
What's the, what's the motion?
To approve the resolution.
No.
Open the floor for discussion.
Absolutely not.
What he's wanting to do.
I think we can destroy. I think we just have discussion.
Okay. Then we don't need one.
Okay. Let's do that, then. Forget the motion. So.
I guess when would we normally be having this conversation?
The negotiations would preferably start in September or shortly after the reelection. There's a reelection vote or retention vote for the union. So under the new chapter, yeah, under the new chapter 20 guidelines, each time the contract expires, there needs to be a new retention vote, the union.
By the members, I.
By the members.
Okay. And they have not had that.
They have not had that. And so what this action today would do is if you approved this, it would suspend the election and simply extend the contract by one year. And normally, Pete, we'd have the negotiations later in the fall. Remember, we talked about when we did the merger, we talked about if all went well this year, we would look at a two- or a three-year contract, the negotiated two- or three-year contract for the upcoming term. Situation that we're in is they're asking for an extension of this contract that's come up last minute. It came up right before the agenda packet was finished last time, so we weren't ready to vote on it. So I just put it on the agenda so you could see it. And I think it's important to know that either way, how this, either way this happens today, Mike and I are committed as a negotiating team, negotiating in good faith and working on a fair and equitable negotiation for the taxpayers and for our employees.
Yeah, I feel a little handcuffed here by the lateness of this, when it was entered into, or given to us. And I don't know that I would be ready to do that without having gone through due process to get to, because the whole, part of the big sticking point, we had the merger and that sort of thing going on last year. But the big hill that we had to climb was with health insurance. And so now, we've got, we have just barely crested that hill, and now we need to start constructing the roadmap on what comes next in the process. And I think we haven't had time to do that yet. So I think that's, we need to take that time and not put anyone in an undue, in a poor situation by not having, just letting things ride and not actually having us do our due diligence to make sure that we have a plan put together.
And I think I would echo Wayne's comments, and then also add the environment that we're in today. It's, it could be an interesting budget year coming up.
And I can, I can relate to what Preston, you know, with citing COVID as a hindrance, and it is a hindrance to a lot of commerce. I think, I don't think that it's a big enough roadblock that we couldn't get around it by just doing our due diligence and taking care of what needs to be taken care of.
The one option that isn't really stated in explanation would be calling for a special meeting that we could still have it taken care of before the September 14 deadline. Is that something we want to consider?
Well, and I feel like if we do that, then all of a sudden, we're going to get into the situation that we were in all the years ago when, you know, Preston threw that big fit about how we were trying to, you know, he was up against a deadline with how the laws changed in Des Moines, and that, you know, the council entered into this 11th-hour deal that they felt was disadvantageous to the workers. I don't want to fall into that scenario again.
I do have a statement here from Tom. He is on vacation this week, but he did ask that I would please state this at the meeting. He is not in favor of the proposed extension without first having the opportunity to negotiate on the terms, especially HSA city contribution limits. That's his two cents worth. Now, he won't have a vote, but today, but that's where he is at currently in his opinion on this.
Okay. Then I will ask the question, if we would, if we would approve this extension, how would it affect that particular piece of this?
It would kick it down the road a year, kick that can down the road another year, if I, as I understand it, correct?
Your understanding, Mayor, is correct. The current agreement contemplates that the HSAs would be ceded with a certain amount of money. Those terms would carry over into the next year. I think the current language talks about ceding them at the maximum allowable amount, so that potentially is what you'd be looking at for the next year.
Okay. What would not be extended?
What would still be discussed or worked through would be the actual wage increase.
And that would be the only piece that's not extended?
That is my understanding. And traditionally, of course, that is the primary thing that gets discussed, one way or the other.
And if we do not do the extension, what happens?
We just continue down the current path as the law provides. Sam and his staff have already supplied to the Herb Public Employment Relations Board the necessary information that they would need for the election. The election's been set. That would happen. If you remember last year, it's a very straightforward process, doesn't take much time. And then, as we get further into the fall and early winter, the normal collective bargaining process would start.
And do we have a sense on what the actual employees' feelings are in regards to this upcoming election, or at least in, as far as what's being presented?
In regards to the proposed extension, it's my understanding that at a minimum, the group representatives have been contacted and are comfortable with it. I cannot speak for all the employees, and if Sam has additional information, he can provide it. Those contacts were done by Preston. He'd indicated that the, his contacts were okay with it. But an extension would also need to be ratified by the membership. One of the factors in ASME seeking this extension is that, under the new law, an extension or a non-vote counts as a no vote. A non-vote counts as a no vote. That means to, Preston has, has lost, he's mentioned that he's lost at least one vote because people thought that it would pass, and it didn't, because everybody didn't go vote. So a retention election, you know, perhaps philosophically supported by the employees, has to be physically supported by the employees or passed. That is one of the, that is one of the factors. One of the other factors, and I mentioned this in my list, is that he desires to be off of the same cycle as the state, and he can focus more time on Sheldon. And he would also like to be able to focus more on interest-based bargaining, and he's been directed not to proceed down the line of interest-based bargaining until after the retention and election votes. That means we start the negotiation process a lot later. So we can still do the interest-based bargaining process, but it would be very limited. It would be limited just to wage if we do an extension.
So we know we have all the pieces in place already to proceed as normal, and I don't see a reason why we should not continue down that road.
So you're saying you would favor the extension?
No. I would say that I would oppose the extension. We have all the, all the infrastructure and all the steps in place for the recertification election, retention election, and then, you know, everything's ready to go. I say we just continue down the road, that we're already traveling. So I'll make a motion to.
You don't have to make a motion. No action.
We're not doing action on this?
I think that's the best interest. We take no action on this and just let it go to negotiations.
Basically, I take no action. It's just like a no vote.
Sure.
Anything you want to call Preston for? Much client?
No, I'm good.
That's the only question I have is, why does it come to the council for our vote? Why don't the employees vote before and say they're 100% in favor before it comes to us?
At the 11th hour.
At the 11th hour.
Yeah.
Because it's still got to go back to them for a vote.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Paul Annas?
Because to me, it feels like it's a union issue driven by the union, not the employees.
Yeah. And I'm, I think I'm picking up on that, too.
And I'm 100%. You know, we have good employees, and we'll treat our employees good. Let's just go down the road and do it the right way.
That's right.
This is my understanding of what the employees would ratify, to use Sam's language. And I may be wrong on this, but I think that if the extension would be approved, their opportunity as a group to ratify anything would not be until we get to the wage question. In other words, I think you're right, is that this extension is primarily coming from the ASME with input from some of the employees, but it's not as if it required a vote or would require a vote from them later to approve that specific issue. It wouldn't be until you get to, are they okay with whatever we'd agree on that's left open? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to muddy the water anymore.
No.
So I think you're either looking at moving forward to item number seven with no action or to accomplish basically the same thing, making a specific motion to not approve the proposed resolution. And they have the same effect.
So is there someone making a motion at this point? If not, no action taken. The process moves on, as are we going to, into the next item. All right, Scott, you, Scott Testrada? How do you spell your, is that it? Am I saying that right?
No. Testrada, Testrudie, Testrudie. I wish it was Smith.
Scott with Premier Communications is with us, and he's going to give us an update on the services they're providing.
I do say it different than what my dad said it. He said Testruda. I think that's the Hospers Dutch pronunciation. I don't know. Like I said, I wish it was Smith.
How do you say it?
I say Testrudie.
Testrudie.
Yeah. One of my children says it different than I do. Just call me Scott. We're good to go. We're good to go.
Gives you something to talk about at the supper table.
It does. It does. So yes, with Premier Communications, I had talked with Sam here a number of months ago, and the COVID thing kind of goofed up our timing to come and talk with you guys. But just to give an update, where Premier's at, hard to believe it's approaching two years since Premier purchased HTC Communications and Hospers Telephone, and it's been a good two years. It's been a fun two years. So good things are happening. And I do have a map, and it might be a little tough to see, but I thought it was fun for you guys to see. How close can I get?
You can get close, but then you're going to have to have a handheld mic, because it doesn't transfer onto the video production, then.
All right. We'll go here.
Wow. I was going to say something, but I won't. So last year, we put fiber in this area of the community. That was the 2019 project. This year, you can see fibers going in that part of the community, and we're hopeful, going through our budgeting process, that this next year, in 2021, fiber will go in that part of the community. We love fiber. Fiber is, hopes our goal to put in.
So are we.
There you go. Awesome. But taking a step back, we have updated the entire COAX plant as well, and Sheldon is what we would call a gigabit community. You can have gigabit internet speeds. Not necessarily that people need gigabit yet, no, that all, I can, yeah. But it's gigabit capable, and in our industry, that's a big thing. Not all communities, not all cities are gigabit capable. You don't have to go very far to find that out. So we've put a lot of effort into getting you to where we thought you should be. And all of our territory will soon be gigabit capable. We're doing some big projects right now in Akron and Hayward and rural areas, but after that, our entire base will be gigabit capable. So if you're an internet person, that means your pipe is really, really big. And that's what people want, is people consume more and more and more bandwidth. So if it's Netflix, if it's whatever you want to do, that capacity is there. And, you know, just for fun, and we're talking to Sam earlier, we prepare our network for what we call the snowstorm. When there's a snowstorm, everybody's home, and you're, that's your peak usage. So that's what you prepare your network for, always where the peak is. Well, when COVID-19 hit, quite honestly, it was a snowstorm for months, and the network performed extremely well. I mean, we were just tickled to death. It, you didn't notice. You just didn't notice. And it doesn't matter if you were in Hinton, in Little Rock, in Sheldon, it worked. And so that's kind of fun to be able to say. You know, you always hope, is it going to do what we want it to do? And, and it did, so proud of that fact. Just a couple other things. We're new to the community, and we've tried to get to know people the last few years. One of our goals is always to be a great partner with the community. And I say that on behalf of my CEO, Doug Boone, the Board of Directors. Boy, if we can assist, if we can help, you know, I've. we can assist, if we can help, you know, I've, I've known Curtis for a while on the economic development from, from his Rock Valley days, you know, if, if Curtis is recruiting a business, how can we assist? How, how, what, what can we do? Can we get fiber there? Can we do this? Can we do that? Absolutely. You know, working with the chamber, working with Sam, and I will say, you guys have been a pleasure to work with. So, kudos to everybody. And I don't know the police officer, but we'll give you a thumbs up. There you go. So, yeah, it, it's a good thing, being a good corporate citizen is obviously very important to us. We hope we're doing well. If not, let Sam know. He can call me. You guys can call me. Very reachable. We're a local northwest Iowa business, and we want the best for you, because honestly, if you grow, we grow. If you do well, we do well. We're all in this together, we're all on the same team. So, I'm going to give this to you guys. There's one thing on here that I, maybe you want to point out. Is that, that first map on your left side, and that's not to scale, the lines don't run in a straight line like that, but Premier has invested tens of millions of dollars in those blue lines. And one of the things that we've really concentrated on is a redundant network. We don't run just a single line into a community. We run multiple lines into communities. You know, there are people on backhoes out there that don't always call in. If you see those people, tackle them for me. But if something gets hit, the network is designed, and in a split second, it flips the other way. And matter of fact, you've probably had that in Sheldon, where part of the network has gone, and you've never noticed it. That's a big, big deal to our company. You only notice it when it doesn't work, right? And so our goal is to make sure you don't notice things, and just to keep it going. So, questions from anybody?
What, uh, what percent of the city is fiber right now?
Here, wherever you see this area in green, that's all fiber. And this has all been updated, as far as the electronics. You know, the, the lines in the ground are, are very important.
It's what you put on the ends that are even more important. So we did what's called an all-digital conversion with our cable television. We got rid of all the analog and went to digital. So if you happen to have Premier Cable, we put boxes on your TVs. Doing that opened up tremendous amount of capacity on the network to deliver the big pipes. So anything that needs to be replaced, we will, we will replace with fiber. But the good coax will, will leave, because it, it works extremely well. Examples, Rock Valley, Hall, Boydun, those communities would all be 100% coax plants, because we continue to upgrade the electronics. And as things wear out, then we replace those with fiber. And so we might do entire sections of community like we did there. You know, if something gets old, and you're just, you're not, you're not going to replace it with copper and, or, or coax, we'll, we'll just go in and do that whole area with fiber.
All right. Any other questions?
No questions, Sam? You're tied. All righty.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yes, Scott, appreciate you being here today, giving us that update, and we thank you for your partnership with our community, making us viable in that economic world that you talked about. Moving on to item 7B. Sam, is there anything else you'd like to report on at this time?
Just one quick item, Mr. Mayor. Received word today that 907 Western Avenue, which has been one of the nuisance properties that we've been dealing with, is being demolished. Feels pretty good. Rest of my report speaks for itself.
Okay.
Oh, one, one more thing. DJs, I think I said in my report, September 10, I believe it will be the 14th is when that will be knocked down.
Todd, I'm going to ask you next, is there anything else you, anything you'd like to share today?
I just thought I would maybe share our current water situation. I don't know if any, I don't know that anybody has asked, but, you know, we are in the beginnings of a drought, we're not in a bad drought, but it's, it's growing across the state of Iowa, but at this point, Sheldon's fine. We were successful with some different well rehabilitation processes this summer, which have improved the amount of water we're able to get out of our shallow wells. We're nearing the end of the high water use season, so I don't foresee us having to go to any restrictions or anything, so just, people be cautious of the resource that we have, and use it wisely, and we'll be fine.
Okay. Any questions for Todd?
Todd, what's the average water usage a day, running about?
Around 900,000.
All right. Scott, anything you'd like to share today? Chief Burge, not Scott Tustruda, Tustrudi. Sorry. All right. Angie, anything from you? Okay. Mike, anything you have? Further? All right, Councilman to my right?
Sir?
From you. How about to my left?
Nope.
And I have no comments either, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Marana.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Camo.
Aye.
All right, and we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.